I call this meeting to order on March the twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three at five eleven P. M. Roll call, please.
Dr. Little. Trustee Lopez. Trustee Ramos.
Present.
Trustee Dopplemore.
Present.
President Calhoun.
Present.
Dr. Curry.
Present.
Approval of closed session agenda. Can I have a motion?
So move.
I'll second.
Move the second. Do we have any discussion? Dr. Little. Trustee Sonia Lopez. Trustee Ramos.
No discussion.
Trustee Dopplemore.
No discussion.
President Barbara Calhoun, no discussion. Then no discussion. Please place your vote online.
Yes. Ramos, then I second it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We did it.
Oh, not me. They come up on you and through. Item three. Request to address the Board of Trustees on closed session agenda matters. Do we have any request to address the Board of Trustees on closed session agenda matter?
No, we do not.
Trustee, do we have any requests for future agenda items? Wait. I'm ready. I'm sorry. Do we have any requests for future agenda items? Dr. Little. Trustee Lopez. Trustee Andreas Ramos.
No, thanks.
Trustee Dopplemore.
No future agenda items at this time.
President Barbara Calhoun, not at this time. I'll do it later. I will close. I will adjourn to go to closed session at five fourteen. I call this meeting to order as six twenty-four. I apologize for the wait. Uh, we did go over on the closed session, so please forgive us. We had some important matters that had to be attended to. Report of actions taken in closed session pursuant to Government Code, Section five four nine five seven one. Nothing to report. I need, uh... Yep. Maybe we please have roll call.
Dr. Little.
Present.
Trustee Lopez.
Present.
Very present.
Trustee Ramos.
Present.
Trustee Dopplemore.
Present.
President Calhoun.
Present.
Dr. Curry.
Here. Here.
Our student trustee Kendra Carnes has attended a conference in Washington, D. C. with the Compton College Association Student Government. And I'd like to let everybody know that Dr. Shirani Little will be moving around throughout the meeting. So don't be concerned or whatevers. And so I would like a pledge of allegiance. Trustee Dopplemore, can you lead us, lead everyone into the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, absolutely. If you could please stand. Place our, place our virtual flag. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic, which is the air. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
Thank you, board. You may be seated. Thank you.
I'd like to have approval of open session agenda.
I'll make an announcement to approve the open session agenda items.
Second.
Discussion. Do we have any discussion?
No discussion.
Roll call. Dr. Curry, do we have any corrections or additions to the agenda?
No, we do not.
Okay. Roll call.
Sorry. No, we do not.
Please vote.
That's a unanimous yes vote.
All right. Item number eight is recognition. We don't, we have none. Request to address the Board of Trustees on agenda and non-agenda matters.
Yes, we do. Charles Jackson.
Is it all? Press the button.
Button. Okay. A good evening, board. Um, my name is Charles Jackson. And I am, uh, the editor and publisher of City Pride Magazine. And also, uh, we have a publication called The Hub City Reporter. Uh, that covers, well, both of them covers, uh, the Los Angeles area, uh, in the inland empire. In The Hub City Reporter, uh, covers specifically, uh, Compton, the city of Compton. And, uh, for a long time, we've been trying to build a relationship with the college here. And, uh, we have, uh, been doing a lot of stories on the events here. My concern and the reason I came, came today is because I, uh, I, I have been trying to, uh, I guess I build a relationship with the, uh, community relations. Okay, and I, uh, I send a lot of emails, uh, and called a lot and never get, get any return calls. I, I, I'm looking to, uh, be able to help the Compton College with their recruiting and with their events. I know there's a lot of, of upcoming events coming up. Uh, and since we are a community, uh, publication, we can help with stories, advertisement, all of that. We can get more of the community, uh, to your events. Last year, I was at the Community, uh, Day Event and I took pictures. And it was a great event, but nobody in the community knew about it. So I, I'm trying to work with the, uh, the college. I say to build a relationship. I need to be in communication with, uh, the community relations, uh, director. Uh, I need callbacks. I need, uh, return of emails. Uh, because we are sourced that, uh, the college needs. You need, you need to be able to reach out to the community. And we have been reaching out to the community, uh, since we started, so. Anyway, uh, I am, uh, you could go to, uh, citypridemagazine, uh, dot com and, and find out more about our publication. Thank you.
Lionel Wiggins.
And it's my error for not saying that, uh, each individual has three minutes. Dog. And we have a timer down here and you should probably see it too.
All right, just reset. Well, good evening, board. Um, thank you for the opportunity to come and share. I like to come every once in a while, um, just to share about what, what plans we have, uh, in workforce development and in some of the initiatives and, uh, projects that we're involved in. One in particular, in relation to the commercial music apprenticeship, um, that was earned by the college. Uh, I was expecting a few colleagues to be here. One is Professor Harvey Estrada. Um, he was kind of gonna share, uh, a little bit of his vision. But he met a couple of, um, business, uh, uh, individuals that brought an opportunity to him. And he's looking to make a splash, um, towards the community and surrounding environment with this program. So he wants to grab attention. This year happens to be the fiftieth anniversary of hip hop. Um, and Black Entertainment Television, B E T, is celebrating, uh, in a variety of ways. And one of them, uh, deals with, um, sort of a, a launch or a celebration party that they're looking to, um, that they would like to, uh, offer us an opportunity to participate in and sort of message to the community, to the world, uh, what we're doing with our commercial music program. And to get more interested people into the program. Um, and the individuals were gonna share a little bit about, uh, their hopes and what they're doing to build this venue at the Mayfair Hotel. A number of sort of well-known, uh, artists from back in the day are involved. Your yo-yos, your ice cubes and, uh, a variety of other individuals, but it has a variety of facets such as, um, there's an artist that is building a Guinness, uh, Book of World Record-sized microphone. And they want to maybe, um, have the art installation here possibly on campus. And so they're looking to, uh, they've spoke to Dean Blanchine, I believe Harvey's talked to her. But they want to come and meet with President Curry and talk more about the idea. So I just wanted to, uh, kind of share some of what the hopes are as they look to, as Harvey Estrada looks to build, uh, his program, uh, this, these coming months. And, uh, moving into the future so that we can get some, um, wider spread notoriety. And it's also an emphasis of ours in workforce development, bringing, uh, collaborations with other business and industry companies, organizations, um, to provide opportunities for our students. So thank you.
Deborah Askew.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Askew and I've been addressing the board for the last couple of months regarding the decreasing enrollment of this, uh, college. From two thousand and eighteen, from eleven thousand five oh six until present, six thousand and thirty-two. And I just listened to the gentleman who wants to get in contact with the board to help, uh, enrollment. I don't believe this, uh, Board of Trustees would really want to work in getting the enrollment up here at Compton Community. They've been on this board since eighteen. Here it is, twenty-three. I'm not gonna say everything I wanted to say. But, um, that multimillion-dollar residential facility to accommodate the homeless here at Compton Community. I see thirteen fifteen, the University of Southern California housing. What's that about? Uh, is it for homeless or is it for the faculty? I don't believe this board nor the current administration, the trustees, your special trustees, the powers that be. There's another agenda for this house, this house. This college. I do not believe that this board nor the administration is being transparent or fully disclose what they are doing. Before I get angry, I'll sit down. That's all.
There are no more speakers.
Oh, no more speakers? Okay. Item nine oh two, Compton Community College District Board of Trustees, future agenda items requests. Do, trustees, do we have any requests for the future agenda items? Dr. Little?
Not at this time.
Not at this time.
Trustee Lopez.
No.
Trustee Ramos.
I, I don't have any.
Trustee Dopplemore.
Yes, um, Board President, um, Barbara Calhoun, I do have a future agenda item. Request, um, I would like to bring before the board for consideration, um, to have a presentation to consider Compton Community College being a vitacite. A vitacite is where we can provide or Compton can provide free text preparation services and information to our students, faculty and residents. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, my future agenda request is I'd like to have a update on our facilities. When I say facilities, I'm talking about the restrooms, the gym and the restrooms and the gym and what's going on. I'd like to have that as a future agenda. And the cleanliness of our campus. For future agenda. Ten four oh one minutes of the February twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three Board of Trustees Meeting. Can I get a motion?
So move.
Second. Do we have any discussion? Dr. Little?
No discussion.
Trustee Lopez.
No discussion.
Trustee Ramos.
No discussion.
Trustee Dopplemore.
No discussion.
President Calhoun, no discussion. Hey, we have a, then no discussion. Please place your online vote.
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Item eleven, reports from representatives and employee organizations. Eleven point oh one, Associated Student Government Report, Paul Medina.
He informed us that he, he's traveling, uh, with the Associated Student Government in Washington, D. C. And he's not here this evening.
Eleven point oh two, Academic Senate Report, Dr. Minador.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. Dr. Curry, I'm Dr. Minadora Moldovenu, the Academic Senate President at Compton College and Communication Studies Faculty. Today is the first day of spring, although we're celebrating with more rain. So I'm glad to see all of us have made it here safely. Um, I have a few items to report on from the Academic Senate. We, uh, we will be ratifying at this upcoming meeting a couple of items. One is a cul- the current, the culinary arts program in, uh, um, collaboration with Lidwin High School, as well as an associate degree for transfer for social work and human services. Uh, in addition, we have already approved and ratified a resolution to provide adequate student services to all Compton College students. And we particularly had in mind students who tend to be on campus in the evening. Um, we had already a first read at the end of last semester and now we, we finally had a second read. In the meantime, we already saw good news that every table, that was one of our concerns, the availability of food for these students. Uh, and we saw the great news that every table is now open later, uh, earlier in the morning and later in the evening. So, uh, of course, I would like to take a little credit for that, although we know the other great forces are at play as well. Um, we also approved a low-cost textbook definition for Compton College to be thirty dollars, which was also the recommended definition approved, um, and forwarded by the statewide Student Senate. We also finalized the, the list of new programs and ranked ordered them in the following order. Our first choice is artificial intelligence. Our second choice is software app design. Our third one is game design and the fourth one is paralegal studies. And senators voted based on which of these programs, we believed based on the data, provided students with the highest upward mobility. So we looked at forecasted growth over the next few years as well as their ability to earn good income. Um, we also had, uh, over winter break and early the semester, we had three faculty request equivalencies, if, for five different equivalencies. Uh, the Senate approved two and denied three, once we looked at the chancellor's, uh, handbook of minimum qualifications. And that concludes the Senate report. We have spring plenary coming up, uh, together with a couple of other faculty. I will be attending the California Guided Pathways Conference, which begins tomorrow. We will be down in San Diego. Um, and both me and the curriculum chair are attending the, the fall plenary coming up. And that is it for me for now. I thank you so much for your time. I hope you have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Academic Senate Report, I'm sorry. C C C F E Certified Employees Report, Jeanette Morales. Okay. C C C F E Classified Employees Report. That. Again. Item twelve is presentations. Four point oh one, Compton College Financial A U.
Today we have, uh, Keith Cobb, the Director of Financial Aid and Scholarships, providing the update on the Financial Aid Department. And I turn it over to, uh, Keith Cobb.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening, Mr. Cobb.
Nice to see you all. So again, my name is Keith Cobb, the Director of Financial Aid and Scholarships, and I'm here to give you the annual, uh, financial aid update. Today I'll be, um, updating the, the board on the CARES and HERF emergency fund, the vaccine incentive program, financial aid in general, the update. I'm gonna talk a little bit about work study this time around. And this new program called Learning Aligned Employment Program, LEAP for short. CARES and HERF. So as you all know, in spring two thousand and twenty, federal government allocated each college in the United States some emergency funds and to give to the students. When it first came out, it was considered CARES. And the eligibility requirement for students was to be in at least, enrolled in at least one unit or have a financial aid application on file. Each semester, Dr. Curry allocated so much money. And I was to find out how many students, excuse me, had an application on file and were enrolled in at least one unit, divide the allocation and send that out to students. As time went on, CARES, uh, turned into what is called HERF. And we expanded the, uh, eligibility requirement so we can reach more students. So the eligibility requirement expanded to being enrolled in at least one unit, have a financial aid application on file and/or the Compton Resource Application on file. So then again, I got all three, um, reports and divided that by the allocation. Next slide, please. Thank you so much. So again, the HERF fund started in spring two thousand and twenty and it's, it goes through this, uh, year, June, two thousand and twenty-three. As of winter two thousand and twenty-three, we have awarded twelve thousand four hundred and forty-one students. And the total amount is five million, five hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and eighty-four. We're still awarding students this spring semester. The next grant I would like to speak about is the Vaccine Incentive Program. This started in fall two thousand and twenty-one and it was for those students who uploaded, um, proof of vaccination and wanted to attend Compton College. If they did that, they got an additional three hundred and fifty-dollar grant, a one-time three hundred and fifty-dollar grant. And, uh, since fall two thousand and twenty-two, that was the last semester we started offering that program. So through fall two thousand and twenty-two, we awarded three thousand nine hundred and twenty-four students in the amount of one million, three hundred and seventy-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred. Yeah, that's right. Sorry. Now, that program no longer exists at Compton College. Now the financial aid updates. The, and these award amounts and so forth are through February. We're still dispersing March, April, May, June and through the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So as of February, we have Cal Grant A and there's only one student. Cal Grant A is typically normally for four-year institutions. Um, but they changed the program. So a student, if they're eligible for Cal Grant A, they come to a community college and they have a dependent. And they want to start receiving it at a community college instead of holding it until they transfer. They're allowed to receive it here and we only have one student who opted to choose that. Cal Grant B with students with dependents. We have twenty-three students in the amount of fifty-one thousand dollars. And then there's the Cal Grant A by itself with no dependents. So this person doesn't have a, a child. We have nine students receiving that grant in the amount of sixteen thousand. Cal Grant B is the transferable grant. So students can receive that at the community college and Cal State and UCs. And we currently have two hundred and thirteen students and two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Cal Grant C are vocational major students already in a vocational program. So this number's a little startling. We only have one student and they received a thousand dollars. And then we have the Cal Grant Foster Youth, um, B, which is kind of like the, um, the Chafee Grants. We have four students at nine thousand dollars. Then we have the, uh, student loans. We have the direct loans, subsidized and unsubsidized. Subsidized, if you know, is no interest and no repayments until you drop your last six units or graduate with your first bachelor's degree. We have sixty students currently receiving that at a hundred and four thousand dollars. We have the unsub, which is like the credit card program. Students can opt and probably get both, which is interest starts, um, accruing right away. We have fifty-eight of those students, a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. Then we have the Federal Pell Grants. We have a hundred, a thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six students receiving that. And we've awarded over three million dollars, close to four million. We'll probably be at four million at least by time the end of the year. We have S C O G, what stands for Supplemental Educational Opportunity Grant. We have six hundred and eighteen students receiving that and we have awarded, and this was just the fall amount, uh, we haven't awarded this spring. And that's a hundred and eighty-four thousand, so that number will double. And then the Student Success Completion Grants. This is where students who are enrolled in at least twelve units or more. We have eighty-six and, um, a hundred and seventy-three thousand. And that award's going out as well. Hasn't gone out for spring, so that'll double as well. The next slide, please, are some of the financial aid dates and deadlines. So October first is when the application comes out every year. There's a March second priority deadline. It's not the deadline for FASBO, but it's if they want to be considered for Cal Grants. They have to have the FASBO on file and apply with the GPA verification form. All institutions automatically upload GPAs for our students, so students don't have to do that form. All institutions automatically upload GPAs for our students, so students don't have to do that form. Then June thirtieth is the deadline for the completion of the FASFA and to apply for the California College Promise Grant. And the promise grant is formerly known as the Bog Fee Waiver, which waives tuition and fees. And then September second is a second round at Cal Grant. For those who didn't possibly get one on the March second, they can still qualify for another one through the September second deadline. Now I would like to talk about the Federal Work-Study Program. So Federal Work-Study Program is working on campus, um being paid out of a grant and normally we try and place people in programs of their major. So the this program kind of struggled through COVID because we shut down, so we didn't have any placement. So we're starting to pick that program back up. Um the students have to have a completed financial aid file, enrolled in at least six units and meeting the satisfactory academic progress standards. As of February, we've had fifteen students employed in the program. And with the last couple of weeks, we've had ten students filling out paper um the applications for interests. So we'll be placing them within the next month or so. Next slide, please. The Federal Work-Study Program, since we um I'd like to thank uh I think it's Dr. Senzake and Dr. Curry about applying now that we're a Hispanic-serving institution. Normally departments, when they apply, uh hire a federal work-study, financial aid would pay seventy-five percent and the department would pay twenty-five percent. But since we qualify as a Hispanic-serving institution, the financial aid Federal Work-Study Program can pay a hundred percent. So alleviates the the departments from having to pick up a part of the budget. And I believe we just got a notice a couple of weeks ago that we qualified again for the twenty-three, twenty-four academic year of the same thing. We have to apply every year. The next program I would like to speak upon is the Learning Aligned Employment Program. Super new. Just started this fall. We're still learning it, otherwise known as LEAP. So this program's provided funding to Compton College to offer eligible students opportunist opportunities to earn money, to help pay their educational costs while guaranteeing career-related experience in the field of study. So this one is a little limited. So the first one has to be research-based um employment. So research uh centers and institutions operated by public post-secondary education institutions, public schools and non-secretarian, non-political organizations that are capable of providing full-time employment or connection to another employer, able to provide full-time employment after graduation. So hopefully, maybe it's like an internship, a paid internship. And if they transfer or graduate, they can continue to work with the those uh employers. We currently only have jobs located on Compton College. Um due to the fact that we're just starting it, we really wanna understand it. And during the spring semester, which we're currently in now, we're starting to reach out to employers in the community and starting to build relationships to see if we can start placing students outside in the community, starting in fall twenty-three. The following are concerns. Um these students are unrepresented populations and the following are considered unrepresented populations according to the California Student Aid Commission. But the categories only need to meet one of the unre-unrepresentative categories, but we mark more than one when reporting to the California Student Aid Commission. So that's one of the reporting guidelines. And then what we've done so far, I would um like to just let the staff know or the board know. We've met with the California Student Aid Commission many times. They're having ongoing meetings with the community, with other schools, with other partners. And we've learned about the requirements and what other uh schools are doing at their institutions. We've drafted a process and guideline internally, uh guidelines and processes um for the program. We've joined a LA Community College LEAP Coordinator Work Group, so we can share ideas. Once a month they meet and we can bounce off questions and so forth. And then we can just call someone or email them um as needed. We received, reviewed and approved job descriptions from STEM, the STEM Center, Campus Police, Black and Male of Color Success Center. So those are the locations right now that we're currently working with on campus. We received students and employers. When I say employers, it's those departments, the agreements to hire the students. And the students have agreed to fulfill their obligations. Uh we've posted their awards to their account. And we'll continue to recruiting on campus departments with instructors, faculty to participate in this LEAP as an employer. Apparently, we have six students participating with the STEM Center in the LEAP program. We're working to finalize more of the STEM Center participants. Campus police student cadet positions are being um looked into, so we can place some students. And Black and Male of Color Success Center student has two. Or I told of at least eight participants, so that I said six earlier. Sorry. So moving forward, we're gonna outreach via student email to promote LEAP for off-campus jobs. Work with partners that other departments have partnerships with to see if they would like to participate in LEAP as an off-campus employer. Hold information sessions for employment, off-campus and on-campus. Work with career services to have students attend workshops once a semester or once a month for soft skills, attendance, interview skills, communication skills, et cetera. Create a cohort model to get students to participate in LEAP, to get to know each other and be able to reach out if they have concerns or questions for sense of belonging. And create a task force for assisting in students' evaluation and employee evaluation program experience and evaluating how to make program improvements. And this slide's, sorry, at a place it should've came after my, can you go back one, please? Uh this should've came after my financial aid office update, sorry. So the Pell Grants first dispersment came out uh February seventeenth. It's usually the first Friday of the semester. We try and get the students some money so they can buy their books and supplies. Then a month later, we disperse Cal Grant and the SCOG. And then loans as well. So those are the dispersment dates for spring and most students have all their cash in hand. We use BankMobile, as you know, initially as a refund preference. But if they choose to opt out of BankMobile, they can use their own checkings and savings and accounts and it's directly deposited in there. And that's my presentation.
Trustee, do we have any questions? Dr. Little?
Yes, thank you so much for the great presentation. I do have a couple of questions. We can roll back to the slide that had the allocations of the HERF. That slide. CARES and HERF, yes. So quick question, i-is this a combination, the twelve thousand four hundred and forty-one? Is that the number of students or a number of awards? So are there repeat students in that number or those are distinctive numbers?
There are definitely repeat students. So every semester, the student can receive the aw-award over and over again.
Do we have it? I'm sorry.
Since the beginning, yes.
So do we have a disaggregated where we know the total number of students served, not the duplicates?
I can get that.
Okay.
Can I jump in on that one?
Yes.
Uh trustee, Dr. Little. So each year we come out with a report regards to um the the basic needs provided to students, include the CARES and the HERF. So we did the one for last year and we're sending that to the board. So then in June, you would get the update, or actually July, you get all the basic needs, services that students receive disaggregated by race as well and also by gender. But we'll send you the one for twenty-one, twenty-two. And then for twenty-two, twenty-three, we have the comprehensive report by July. If that's okay with the Board of Trustees.
That's fine. Thank you for that answer. Um in terms of the total amount, I know that that's cash. Do we ever look at a total like formula, Dr. Curry, i-as it relates to, for example, the computer, the hotspots, like the total investment in students? Can we possibly get that that number as well? Because I think this doesn't show necessarily all of the.
S-s- so let let me come back to you, to the board at the next board meeting, because we do that now by the service we provide. But I think you might wanna be, we could probably do something especially based on basic needs of, like, for example, if a student received a laptop, received uh CARES grant, what that might look like for the individual student. Because the more services students have received, it's more likely they're probably successful. So let us work through what that might look like and bring back something to the Board of Trustees. But I think that's a great question and a great recommendation as well.
Okay. Um and just a couple more questions, I'm sorry. So for the unsubsidized, that would also be a data point that I would be interested in since those are ones where the interest immediately starts accruing. And obviously, those are the kind of loans that we wanna limit our students to because of the big debt that they have, you know, really leave with. One other thing, a data point for future. How many students of the monies that we've given have we retained? And I know that that's a tricky question because some might have been in their last semester or last year. But I'm just wondering if there's a way they may not be, if it helped them to remain in school. Um for the LEAP, can we go to that slide very quickly? Thank you. Um I know you indicated for the work-study program because of our HSI, we have a hundred percent coverage. For LEAP, i-is there a percentage of what the campus pays or the program pays?
It's a hundred percent.
It's a hundred percent. So the employer has no?
Correct. From the LEAP grants, it's a hundred percent, but it comes out of the grant.
Okay. And you said it has to be research-based in some capacity or does it have to be a research institution?
In some capacity.
So they can conduct research, for example, on, they want to work at a childcare on some aspect of childcare learning outcomes. It doesn't have to be like we're conducting this major community research project. It's just some aspect of research.
The employer has to have some aspect of research.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes.
Okay. And and w-w-when we look at that, what percentage, you said it's eight students right now?
That's correct.
And so I would just have a recommendation instead of a statement, since we have the privilege of having, for example, the community city pride, that there is a way in which we can not only outreach to, as you said, the employers, but to amplify uh these programs. Because I think, one, it could be a way to obviously help financially and as a way to give back to the community. But also, it's a way that we can look at learning objectives in some capacity, how our students are demonstrating the skills that they're acquiring. Thank you.
Could I, can I jump in on this, this response on this question? This goes into some of the work that we're trying to do as they's to strong work workforce development and apprenticeships. So right now, Academic Affairs is working on a uh report for me regards to the businesses within our community that connect to the majors that we currently offer. And we're gonna be scheduling individual meeting with those businesses to link the partnership, which could also lead into this program, but also to new apprenticeship programs as well. And then next fall, working with other community colleges within our area, we're gonna host a apprenticeship and internship conference with those businesses to link them to our students and our programs. So your question is a timely question, because the key right now for community colleges, not only in California, but nationally, how are you able to link students into jobs with livable wages that connects to the major? And that's what's been missing and we're really focused in on that right now at Compton College's Race to Workforce Development. And we have to, we have to push even harder. And so a-at the next board meeting, we'll provide an update as a race to where we're at on this. And I and I think it's a good time for the board to engage in this type of conversation, linking our guided pathways majors into jobs for our students.
Sorry, just one last thing. Thank you, Dr. Curry. And I know when we heard um Dr. Menadouris in in the new potential uh programs, uh you had it listed there, but the preparation, working with career services, it would be really good to maybe see a module where the students get really solid foundations before they go into any of these uh uh jobs and so maybe backtracking the time. Thank you.
Trustee Ramos.
When was uh LEAP started?
This past fall.
Okay. And also, uh how are students finding out about uh work-study and LEAP?
So we send out a email to across the campus. We advertise it through um the web, our website. Uh we also host workshops for um that we advertise for work, students who are interested in work-study. So monthly workshops and they can come and get the information. And we also host supervisor workshops, so the supervisor can see what the responsibility that lies on them as well. So we have workshops throughout the semesters.
Thank you.
Trustee Delphamore?
Yes. Hello, Mr. Cobb. Thank you so very much for um I did, uh for the uh for the update and your uh and your presentation. So if you, if you could just go to slide number six. Um so in reviewing it, I just wanna make sure that um you know that California is very generous with the financial aid. And we also have the majority of our students that are participating, of course, our first-time students from high school and so on and so forth, participating and receiving a lot of um benefits with our California um Oliver W. Connor's Promise Program. So with the students that are um really with the with the loans, with the subsidized loans and the unsubsidized loans, I just want to know if there is, before those awards, when 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 the student is receiving that award, that there is a conversation to make sure that they are aware and that they have exhausted all of the other different um pots of financial aid that they are available um to receive.
Yes, I can assure you that. So when a student applies for financial aid, it's initial application, they're automatically awarded grants. But if they want a loan, it's an additional application. And we hold workshops. It's a mandatory workshop that we require the students to sit through. So they, and we also bring in, we have a financial literacy gentleman that works on campus and we bring him in, so they understand the value of credit and so forth. So every student is required to fill out additional application and attend a fi-uh student loan orientation. And some students opt out after that, after they hear their responsibilities. And which is, that's pretty much like the point of the the orientation is to make sure they know what they're getting involved in. But yes, we we make them, I guess for lack of a better term, jump through a few more hoops. And if they're really interested, then they continue through the process.
Okay, thank you. And also too with the um for our foster youth. Um because I know that working with the California Student Aid Commission, that there are some concerns and challenges that we have with that data sharing agreement. So um because I'm just looking at the number of um of students that are actually participating and receiving that particular um funding source. And I know that there are, is there ways of identifying students, not just with the foster youth, but also students that are in those unders- those other underserved communities or buckets that are listed on the other side, on the other slide.
And I defer to Dr. Curry. Foster youth is under um uh Ms. Tosin. And and uh so she works with those students and helps them through the that part. So it's not directly through me.
Regardless, we we will follow back up with the the Board of Trustees regarding that question. But as mentioned, foster youth and foster kinship work is under uh Tosin Williams. And the key for us is to ensure that students who are foster youth are basically followed up and engaged as they's to financial aid. And so we can do some special targeted outreach through the financial aid office, be able to send those individuals email communications and really try to follow with them through a financial aid coordinator. So the next board meeting, I will give you a written plan uh through a board letter of how we're gonna follow with the foster youth, but you're absolutely correct.
Yes, thank you. And let me just see, I believe that is um again, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Trustee Lopez.
In the work-study program, um I don't recall you mentioning, how many of those opportunities are onsite versus offsite?
Work-study is currently all onsite.
I have a question. Can you go to page four? Yeah, yeah, that one. So total amount this first year to date, is that amount? So we still have money left in this and?
So this semester, we're giving, this semester is the last semester and then we've been allocated a million and a half. So twelve millions going out in grants, which will be going out actually this week. And then an additional um three hundred thousand to late-start students who enroll in twelve units or more. So once the, I believe it's uh April fifteenth is the second eight weeks of the semester. After that starts, we'll see who's enrolled in twelve units or more, has a financial aid application or the resource and grant them based on how many um uni- or how many students and divide the allocation.
And on page five. And on page five, that would be the same, same answer. Total amount, it would be the same answer. Okay. Not for you, Dr. Curry. Dr. Curry, did I send you an email that they had other deadlines for foster?
Yeah.
Okay.
You didn't.
Does it affect our students?
No, no, they're, we're, it doesn't. Every deadline affects our students, but we have been communicating the deadlines. So those deadlines you sent to me, we already been communicating.
Okay. Stay on top of it.
Yes, I appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. On page thirteen, no, no, no. Page twelve, twelve. At the bottom, I had a question. Where it says priority will be given to edible students? I think you answered that question.
I believe so.
You, you answered that question. That's okay. On page thirteen. So at the top, where it says STEM, then it says student, it doesn't have a circle in yes or no. Is, is it brand new?
Yes, it's brand new. And also, we had to just put something in there so we could move along the slide. They didn't allow us to go to the next page, so that's, yeah. Sorry.
All right. I'll just, page fourteen. Very bottom. You have six students? Is, is, where it says currently have six students participating with the STEM Center?
That's correct.
Do, do you need to be more, or you're going out for more?
Oh, we're definitely looking for more, more across the board. We have, it's a very large grant. And so we have lots of money and lots of opportunities for students. We're just a little limited with the campus positions. So moving into fall two thousand twenty-three, we're looking to go out into the public, so into the community and so forth. We just wanted to make sure this semester or this year, since it's so new, we fully understand the program and so forth. But we're definitely starting to reach out to the community to expand the program.
Okay, when you say you're reaching out, you'll be reaching out to the community, are you sending postcards or flyers? Because I know you, ladies and gentlemen, already have a list of names, right? You already have your, your list of names that you send things out for the parents and students and stuff like that.
Right.
So are they flyers or postcards or?
So right now, with the, the group that people meet, the LEAP, for lack of a better term. So employers are aware of it as well. So they're coming to us at first, letting us know they have openings and positions are interested in, for example, with Compton College or Long Beach, just the, the area that they're in. And then we get their contact information, and it's by telephone and email.
So it's for every student, not just for Compton College? Are we focusing on Compton College?
We're focusing on Compton, but the, the group that meets together is like all the community colleges, yeah.
And does that also go along with our dual enrollment, with we reach out to Compton? I know they already have a STEM program, but I know they come to us as part of dual enrollment, so are they part of that process also?
So the high school students don't qualify for this program?
Oh. Oh.
Not yet. Maybe they'll expand it.
Oh, okay. So it's only college?
That's correct.
Oh, okay.
As well as the work-study.
Okay. Thank you for that. Great answers. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
So much for answering all the questions. That, that was, maybe they will do high school students one time, and until then, okay, let's do our college students.
Take care at home first.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Okay.
May I? Trustee, may I just make one other comment?
Of course.
If I, if, if I could just make a recommendation, and this is just really a suggestion, like in terms of like inclusion, because we know that there's a lot of, of course, working very closely with the agency, you know, that there's being some modification, right, with the California Dream Act? Just in some of the information, because I know you have FASDA, and I missed it, you included it, right? But it's just for like as a oversight, if you could just put FASFA slash CADA or the California Dream Act, right, or making a separate category, you know, when you are communicating that information as well. Because we are an Hispanic-serving institution. And of course, we also need to make sure that those students, they also know that there is a separate application process, that there is separate funding, you know, in addition that's available for them as well. I'm just kind of thinking that maybe, maybe somewhere, I know that there's no data sharing agreement, but maybe some of that loans, right, we're just trying to, to kind of offset some additional financial burden on our students as well. But that was, that's just one suggestion that I have. And also, I know, Mr. Cobb, I would really like to see Dr. Curry as well in the future updates. I would like to see moving forward a little bit more data, right? So the number of, the number of workshops, the number of financial aid workshops, the number of students that actually participated on those, you know, how many of those did you have that were for our, you know, our, you know, that was more emphasis on our DACA students, right? So that's the kind of information that I would like to see, the kind of, like, some type of measurement on the performance as well.
Understood, yes.
So those are just two things that I have, Mr. Cobb. But other than that, Bravo. Good job.
Thank you.
And the last thing I want to say, I know that you was talking about outreach. And I think Dr. Little had already mentioned about Hub City Pride. That's a very good outreach, because that, that magazine goes all over. Not just in the Compton community, but it, it goes all over everywhere. So you might want to, I can't tell you what to do.
I've met the gentleman at a Cash for College event.
Okay.
So it'd been in there.
Let me move on. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Dr. Curry? You have another one?
The next presentation we have is Dr. Caesar Jimenez, who's doing a presentation on our Compton College Student Success Team Update. Good evening, President Curry and Board of Trustees. My name is Caesar Jimenez. I'm the Dean of Counseling and Guided Pathways. Thank you for providing us space to present on student success update, student success team update. And before we dive into today's presentation, I'll hand it over to my colleagues to introduce themselves.
Thank you so much. Good evening. My name is Beatrice Sapiens Nunez, Student Services Advisor, assigned specifically to Fine Arts, Fine Arts Communication and Humanities Guided Pathway.
Good evening, Board. My name is Noemi Monterosso. I'm a Guided Pathways Counselor. I'm assigned also to the Fine Arts Communication and Humanities Guided Pathway Division.
All right. So in front of you, you have a table of contacts that will talk about Compton College Completion by Design, our strategic goals, North Stars, overview of the student success team, CRM advisor, early alerts, student success team accomplishments, activities, and next steps. Completion by Design is actually a model borrowed from Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. I think we did a really good job in adopting that model. And, and not only did we adopt that model, we were able to add a fifth point in the student journey. So the completion by design model looks at the student journey, connection, entry progress, completion, and that fifth point is transition, helping our students enter the workforce, gaining a family livable wage, or transferring to a four-year. The completion by design model is a way for us to operationalize the guided pathway framework. So what you're going to hear from today regarding the student success committee, our student success team, and the guided pathway committee, doesn't come out of left field, right? I mean, it's driven by our comprehensive master plan or vision, chance, or chances vision for success, and ultimately, the completion by design. So this is actually an opportunity for us to redesign the student experience. Two pieces I'll highlight that you'll see there are programs that are fully mapped and aligned. So we have program mapper and allow students to really look at visually what courses students need for a certificate and a degree. But they also get to look at career information such as career salary, growth, and outlook. In addition to that, some of our maps are actually mapped to four-year schools. So right, right now, you'll see ten of our ADTs, but what students could take here at Compton College and what they can take over at C C Dominguez Hills. So that's a really good piece for our students to be able to visually see a roadmap of what they need. The other piece that we'll talk a little bit later on in today's presentation are early alerts. Next slide, please. So we have here our strategic goals, and, and the slide right after that, we'll talk about our overarching North Stars. But for the student success team, when we think about our North Stars, how do we focus on that? We have our strategic goals. The student success team really is made up of the five guided pathway divisions, but also plays a role with the guided pathway committee. So in front of you, you see the strategic goals, you know, put together by the guided pathway committee. And we focus on strengthening on-ramps for our students, new students, returning students, and those students who have stopped out, improving holistic student support for students in transfer level English and transfer level math. You know, it's probably something you've seen a number of times, and why, as it relates to AB seven oh five, making sure our students complete transfer level English and transfer, transfer level math in the first year. And then also retaining, retaining our students from fall to spring through interventions and strategies. Again, you hear a little bit more about early alerts later on as an example of what we're doing with our student success teams. Next slide. And so these are our North Stars. These, these are the overarching data points, if you will, of what the student success teams and our guided pathway committee agreed upon, and that's successful enrollment. I talked about the completion model, completion by design model very briefly. But, you know, successful enrollment, helping our students not only apply, but also having a high yield rate, meaning applying and also enrolling at the college. All students fall to spring persistence. Another thing that I would like to mention as an example, that Dr. Susanko, our Director of Institutional Effectiveness, and Dr. Rebecca Blonschine, Dean of Student Success, they led our design team, and they looked at students who had like zero units, and looking at both quantitative qualitative data on why students, students may have stopped out. And so that's some of the work that's being driven by the guided pathway committee. And then also our North Stars, making sure our students complete transfer level English, transfer level math in the first year. All right. And then now we're going to go to the next slide, and you really want to hear from classified professionals and our faculty who are doing the work.
Thank you so much, Dr. Jimenez. So an overview of the student success teams. So each guided pathway division has a team of people from across campus who are focused on student success and support. So what does a student success team do? The student success teams put on events for students. They track student progress toward completion of their goals, and they give students a home base when they need support. So as the diagram shows, student success is at the center. It's at the core, right, of what the success teams are trying to accomplish, what we focus on. So the members of the success teams are made up of staff from across campus, across different departments and areas, such as workforce development, student support services, student success center, counselors and advisors, institutional effectiveness, the department dean, chair, and faculty. So again, you have classified staff, faculty, managers, and supervisors working together as a team to support our students with a holistic approach. Next slide, please. Okay, so students will have various tools to explore possible pathways. Students will pursue a clear pathway in their educational goals, to reach their educational goals. One example that has been mentioned already, program mapper. So program mapper is, you could say, like a visual map or roadmap. It's found on our website. So students can click on it, and it maps out visually, right, what they should be, what courses they should be doing per semester. It has the number of units, so it's a roadmap. It's a great visual tool. It's also a great recruitment tool, something that can be handed out. So that is program mapper, and it also includes information on career. So salary growth, what's the expected growth in that area, in that career, in that industry? So it's valuable information, right, provided. So again, it's combining the education component, but also with career. Student educational plans. And so students, of course, meet with our counselors, and the counselor creates their educational plan, which maps out their courses by semester based on the student's educational goals, their objectives, right, what they're interested in. We always recommend to students to meet with the counselor at least once a semester to make sure that they're meeting their goals, and to make sure that their ed plans are correct, up to date, to ensure that they, you know, reach their goals. So students are seeing a connection in what they're learning to their future career, right? The goal again is to combine their education with their future careers. Students have a support system throughout their education. For example, student support programs here at Compton College, such as EOPS Care, Cal Works, the Special Resource Center, FIST. CRM advised early alert is another wonderful support that we have here at Compton College, which I will talk about briefly shortly, and case management. Next slide, please. CRM advised early alert. What is it? So CRM stands for Customer Relations Management Advised Early Alert System. So it's an early warning system for student tracking, and this module comes out of a company called Illusion. So we refer to it as just CRM advised early alert. So this platform allows faculty to easily notify Compton College, student services advisors, counselors, or members of the success teams when students are not doing well academically, and so that we, the success team members, can intervene right away in a timely manner. So this early intervention is meant to identify students who are in need of additional services and provide, again, timely holistic student approach, a student support. We, Compton College, has been recognized for the use of technology to provide students with a holistic support program. So there is an annual award. It's called the Illusion Impact Award. So the annual award recognizes institutions, right, that use technology to solve challenges, operate more efficiently, and offer a better student experience. So Compton College is the recipient of the Impact Award for two thousand twenty-three. And we, the Compton College, will receive a twenty-five thousand dollar prize as a result. Yes, thank you. So we're very proud. This is wonderful news. A wonderful shout out to the entire team that works on CRM advised early alerts. And this is just, it's amazing. It's a national award. So it's, you know, it's, it's wonderful for our college. It gets our name out there, of course, for the wonderful work that the team is doing. Next slide, please. So this diagram shows, if you will, a workflow, per se. So first, from left to right, for example, we start with our faculty. So our faculty submit the early alerts onto this platform, onto CRM advice. And there's different categories or reasons that a professor can submit an early alert. It might be academic progress, maybe a barrier that a student is experiencing, but also kudos. The student is engaged in class. The student is earning an A or B in class, right? So it can also be kudos. Or it could be social, emotional, or personal needs that the student is experiencing at the moment. So, okay, so once the faculty submits the alerts, then the student services advisors or counselor, okay, they receive the alert through this platform, right? And then we actually then reach out to the student right away. We do three attempts at reaching the student. Attempt one is a phone call. Attempt two is a text message. Attempt three is an email. So again, three different attempts, right, three different methods of communication, because we really want to try to reach our students. All of these attempts or contacts are documented in CRM advise for case management follow-up. This includes all our notes. So if we do reach a student successfully, of course, we also document that in CRM advise. And if we are not able to reach the student, so if it's an unsuccessful attempt, well, we also document that as well. We also pay attention to, if the student is part of a categorical program, such as EOPS Care, perhaps, the Special Resource Center, Cal Works, then us, the, the staff that received that alert, we actually assign it or forward that alert to the appropriate staff member in that program or department. Why? Because it's more efficient, they're, they're a smaller program. They could pay individualized attention to that student, and that student is already part of their program, right? So then we would assign it, and that staff in that program actually proceeds to do the early alert. Or also, in some cases, if we feel that Um, or also in some cases, if we feel that the student needs assistance with other areas such as financial aid, admissions and records, counseling, our student health center, then we make sure, right, to, to follow up with appropriate referral in a timely manner to ensure that our students get that support that they need. So that is where the success team comes in because we would reach out to the person that works in that specific department, but that is part of our success team. So I would, um, reach out to, um, the staff that is part of the FOSH success team, but that works in that specific department. So, uh, it's a nice workflow and a holistic approach again. Uh, thank you so much. Next slide. Um, some testimonials here are some testimonials directly from students that us, the staff have documented, um, since we started doing early alerts. For example, one testimonial is classes are still in session. I was thinking of waiting to participate in my classes until campus reopens. Thanks for the clarification. This was actually one testimony that I received from a student. I, I will never forget this testimonial. Um, this was in twenty twenty, so it was in the, you know, the beginning of the pandemic when we went remote. So I remember, and so it was great that I was able to clarify for the student, right, what was going on. Hey, well, no, you know what? Yes, classes do move forward, but look, this is how we're doing them now. Now they're, now they're remote. Now they're through Canvas. Um, another testimonial, this is hard because I did not have the technology. I needed to stay at home to take online classes. Thanks to Compton College for providing the resources I needed. Um, again, because Compton College, we, um, let students borrow a laptop, wifi hotspot, headset, a calculator, right? So, so again, technology and resources are available to our students. And another testimonial, thank you so much for reaching out. I really appreciate you guys checking in on us. So some very positive feedback that we get from our students in our, um, attempts to reach them. So when they do reply to us, it's very positive. They're really appreciative and it makes all of us feel good in doing these early alerts because they really do appreciate it. Um, next slide please. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Beatrice. Hi, good evening, board. I'm just gonna quickly highlight some of the other work that we're doing in our success teams. Uh, we are part of the annual planning process to request funding. So every year, every fall semester, a standing agenda item in the success team meetings is to create logic models and provide recommendations of items that we would like to, activities or events that we would like to provide to our students during the next academic year. Um, in the fall semesters, it's our first time that the success teams created service area outcomes, so we can start evaluating the data and provide that data, um, in this evaluation. Um, so our two service area outcomes are, revolve around creating, uh, sense of belonging with students here at Compton College as well as helping students make career informed decisions. So we're trying to provide events, activities, and resources that address those SAOs. Uh, this year, through the institutional resource allocation process, we were awarded fifty thousand dollars per, uh, so ten thousand dollars per success teams uh, to help us provide these events, activities, and resources for, for our students. Uh, we also received five thousand dollars for swag per success team and that I think it's on the worst and we will be receiving soon in time for our community day. Uh, so hopefully we'll see, uh, a lot of swag for our potential students. Uh, we also received a funding of fifteen thousand dollars to provide new students with survival kits. So all new students will receive a small gift of a backpack and school supplies. And we were also awarded fifteen thousand dollars to start the student academic conferences, so students can start attending the conferences that will be helpful in their career development. Next slide please. Alrighty, uh, so some of the things that we're also doing in the success teams is connecting with our students through email and text. Uh, we have created a calendar of student milestones and we are sending emails per that milestone. For example, maybe in the first week, we want to welcome the students to the school and introduce ourselves as, ourselves as a success team and a point of contact for them, especially if they don't know anyone on campus. Maybe by week ten, we'll focus more on like enrollment and making sure they are prepared to register for classes and meeting with counselors and all that good stuff. Uh, some activities that we have, um, done are, uh, providing students with cosmetology kits. These are very pricey, over a thousand dollars. I'm really excited that some students are able to receive these kits. We also have some social justice speaker series. Right now, what's currently happening and happened last semester as well is to make it happen with our STEM, uh, STEM guided pathway divisions. So around twenty-five to thirty students are creating little robots, right, by the end of the semester. We are also hosting different various, uh, workshops. So for FOT, for example, we're hosting some creative writing workshop, novelty speaker workshops, digital art and photography workshops, just to get the careers out there to our students and they can make a connection to what they're learning in class, to what they could potentially do in their future career. We also take students to field trips. Uh, for example, last semester, our instructor, uh, took students to the Museum of Latin American Art as well as the California African American History Museum. And I know other divisions or other success teams are also providing their old trips and I think they're still like in progress in the planning stages. Next slide please. This is a other, uh, a list of activities still. Uh, so one of the things we did last week, uh, last Thursday, we took a group of students to watch The Lion King, uh, The Lion King at the Pantages Theatre. It's really exciting. Uh, I think the majority of them have never been to a theater production, so I was really excited to see them, all excited and kind of like hyped up about theater and, and just having that cultural, like that, that experience that they wouldn't have gotten otherwise. Uh, next week, we're taking students to see Twilight, Los Angeles nineteen ninety-two. So it's a good, like, theater in the arts, but also like a history, um, in the history area. Uh, future field trips this semester, we're also taking some students to the craft contemporary, uh, the craft contemporary, and I think we're taking students again to Mola and Lachma. Um, we, last semester, the FOT, we had a social mixer. So we had uh, faculty, staff, uh, students, administrators, we all went into the student, uh, the new student lounge and we just had lunch with our students and that was really fun way to, to just socialize and and have our students meet us in face to face as opposed to just email and text. Uh, so we are providing a lot of activities for our students and again, our goal is that we are helping them create a sense of belonging here at Compton College. We're hoping that we, they are making a connection that they know someone on campus, that they know that we are here to support them through their journey at Compton College. And we're, I know, we're trying to create a hub. So we're trying to, you know, take care of them as, uh, our smaller programs like EOPS, Cal Works have sort of created like their case management, um, kind of cohort. We're trying to replicate that schoolwide. Uh, just so you know, there is the link there, uh, to the success team videos are still kind of, uh, in progress. Um, not all the videos are in there. I think only the counselors and advisors are in there, but in the new webpage, you'll see all the videos of our faculty and the success teams that have created these videos. Next slide, thank you. Uh, these are just pictures. So on the left-hand side, we have a picture of our social mixer that happened last November. And on the right-hand side, again, our, uh, we have Pamela Richardson, who's creating her success team video for our students. We have a student receiving her cosmetology kit. And this is, I don't know when this was, I don't know if it was last semester or last year, but this was like the final product of the make it happen activity with the STEM division. So some of the next steps that we're concentrating on, um, is oper- license, uh, moving towards a, um, a success team, uh, management, case management model. When we first started, it kind of turned into like this programming, creating the best for students. We're trying to move towards more case management. We're, we're creating proactive outreach. We're reaching out to students. We're checking their progress. We're making sure they have their education plan. We're making sure they're progressing towards their goal. So we're, we're checking in with them and making sure they're meeting those milestones. Um, we're also trying to increase, uh, student engagement with our campus and our, and our staff members, um, and faculty through our different programming events and activities. And we're also going to start reviewing our new service area outcomes, uh, to provide more, uh, relevant data to how we can further support our students. Another thing that's happening in May is our success, it was on a, I think a success team slash guided pathways summit, uh, which the success teams will participate in. We are also, as the, the success teams will all be participating in community day, so we hope to see you all there on April twenty-second. We'll have different activities, um, different activities, uh, we'll have it on the flyer. Uh, and the one last thing that we're trying to work on is revising our success team manual, just to update and, and clarify roles and responsibilities. I think, um, I think we have a draft that's coming up soon. Try to rush, sorry guys. Alright, I think that was, um, do you have any questions regarding success teams, regarding pathways?
Trustee, do you have any questions, Dr. Little?
Thank you, all three of you, for a great presentation. I just have a couple of questions. If we can go back in the PowerPoint to the diagram of the different stakeholders. Right there. Um, so I'm wondering, as all of these are, these, this team is working together, the frequency of how you all meet strategically or check in or report back?
So it, it, it does depend on the success team. And I'll, and I'll provide some examples with, with FOT. I think we meet a couple of times a month.
Uh, we meet once a month and we have like check-ins and we have activities or partnering that's happening, so we've got, uh, picked all the things that we need.
There, there's that meeting, which is dependent on each success team. Then we also have, I think, twice a month, the guided pathway committee meeting, which is the larger group. Then on top of that, you have the toolkit meeting, which is pretty much all the lead counselors, all the lead student services advisors coming together to kind of like standardize processes, uh, agendas and things like that.
Okay, I'm just wondering where the student voice is in terms of how do they inform a lot of these activities and programming? It doesn't have to be itemized tonight, but it would be really great to see the empowerment piece of it in terms of definitely the institutional investment, but the student voice as well. Um, I also wanted to know in terms of the role of the learning environment inside the classroom, inside the curricula, where does that factor into the discussions around overall student success within the team?
So, you know, coincidentally, I think just last week or maybe two weeks ago, when FOT, success team had their meeting, they have now a standing agenda item and all the success teams on early alerts. That's kind of one example of the work that you can see like in intersection between student services and academic affairs. Really because instructional faculty are the ones in there teaching the course. To be able to have a discussion about, you know, the, the number of students getting an early alert, um, receiving progress reports, maybe letter grade of a D or an F, missing, um, homework assignments, tardiness, things like that. Um, I think has been critical and will continue to be critical in having that across the board. Um, and I'll be honest, you know, we continue to reach out to our discipline faculty to participate and the success teams and, and I want to say at least with, with FOT success team, they have a fair amount of discipline faculty who, who come out and participate in success, success teams, including our academic deans and our division chairs.
Thank you, because I think those are, thank you so much for that answer. I think it's really important. Um, and maybe at another presentation, we can hear about the training that goes into that to determine those early alerts and to ensure, um, that they're informed in the manner in which they should be, right? So that students are not getting into a cycle of, of challenge. And then another data point maybe for the future is the total number of students who are engaged each semester and any connectivity to their retention or even an increase in their, I hate to say GPA, because that's just one measure, but their student learning, but even their sense of belonging in terms of their participation. And then you mentioned it, but the percentage of faculty to student ratio in terms of participation when we look at each of the divisions, because I just don't think that there's a way that we can separate student outcome, student learning, right? Student affairs and academic affairs. We all are only here for students and for them to learn and the collective experience is just that. So we all have to be aligned and equipped. So thank you all so much and we look forward to future uh, reports.
Thank you.
Trustee Lopez. I'm sorry. You on the mic? I thought, I, I didn't think your mic was on, that's why. Trustee Romboz.
No questions. Thank you for the presentation.
Trustee Dopplamore.
Yes. Congratulations on winning the award. What is it called again? On, um, on, on bringing home some money. Yay. Congratulations again. Thank you so very much for that. Um, a lot of hard work and a lot of, um, programs um, and activities to help to ensure student success and they feel, you know, connected. They're not getting into that empower, that imposter syndrome, right? Um, but I, what I would like, um, just maybe like to add kind of what, um, um, Dr. Little was saying is, if you could, I think it to measure the success, right? And, and I think this might, in a way, this could just be something easy to do. Um, so like the number of students that are, that you're serving in the program, the number of calls, right? How many actually responded to those calls? How many did not respond to those calls, emails, or so on and so forth? Um, the number of students in the different, in the different groups into the different success teams. Um, so that way we could, you know, we can look and see what is actually working and what's not, not working to like make those particular, you know, adjustments. And I think, um, maybe starting with like the new cohort of, you know, fresh students, that kind of gives you, you know, probably like a good baseline as like which ones are, um, that are arrive, that are, um, enrolling in the fall semester and which ones actually, you know, come back to re-enroll, you know, in the spring semester, that type of thing. That kind of, you know, that way we can kind of track and then maybe do like an exit interview when those students are um, continuing on to, um, therefore your institution. But other than that, again, congratulations, um, a lot of good work and, um, we appreciate all your efforts. Thank you.
So, so I want to jump in a little bit on the, uh, question regarding the evaluation of the success teams and what we're doing. First of all, I'll state to the, the faculty, staff, and administrators, and students have been a part of this process since two thousand nineteen. This is a part of our, um, when we transitioned from the partnership with El Comino College, we started out as a guided pathways college, similar to Gutman College, and also the work that's done at Georgia State. So this is a total transformation of our academic programs and support services as relates to guided pathways. Not to mean colleges have done it this way. What we can do though, moving forward, is looking at how we evaluate the work of the success teams. I hear the questions from the board of trustees tonight, but I think we need to look at our overall evaluation plan for the success teams and bring that back to the board of trustees because some of the requests that are being provided there are not feasible based off the staffing that we have. However, there's other things that we can do to get to the questions provided by the board. So if you give us, just give us a couple of months, so you can really start to look at a little bit more of how we're evaluating the works that are done by the success teams, because they're doing a lot. And so the question would be, are we gonna start doing more pre and post? Are we gonna start to look at what type of basic needs services? How many students switch their major or declare their major? So let us develop an overall evaluation plan for the success teams and we'll bring that back to you with the next two months. And then the board can be able to provide feedback and input based off of the information that you would like to receive.
And please, if it's appropriate or where appropriate, where the board can support your community events for visibility. So again, it's a collective. Thank you.
Can you please go to page four? Page four. Yes. The first paragraph. And you say, those who have stopped out, what, what, what is that? Stopped out? Or did you mean upped out? I'm just asking.
So, uh, students who stopped out had been for a number of reasons, but you know, they were here in fall and then they just maybe stopped coming to Compton College in winter or spring.
Okay. Okay, and, uh, yeah, that's what I thought. Is a new phrase?
Yes.
Okay, I gotta, thank you. I, I gotta learn these new phrases that y'all putting down. Oh, okay. That's pretty good, because I kept saying stopped out. Do we mean upped out? But it's okay, I'm gonna learn these new phrases. Just keep on giving it to us, okay? Oh, you just learned it? Well, help me learn them too. Um, this is very good. Um, I know they had fun when they went to see The Lion King, huh?
Yeah, they loved it.
Oh my God, I've seen The Lion King over and over and over again. Every time I see it is just as exciting as the first time when it started years ago when it first came. So, uh, maybe next time I'll do a little cheat and sneak on the bus with y'all or whatever and meet y'all there, but, uh, that Lion King is fantastic.
It was a good, like, introduction to them. Like, this is the best one you can start with.
Right, right, right. That was good. Um, I don't have any other questions. I just wanted to know what that word was and, uh, fantastic report and thank you so much. Thank you for the presentation. Oh, and, uh, and the Illusion Award. I know that they're going to transmit it electronically, but I'll be traveling there. I'll be there.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, item thirteen is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
Trustees, wait a minute. Trustees, wait a minute. A discussion. Trustee, do we have any items to discuss? Okay, uh, Dr. Little?
Can you come back to me, please?
Come back to you. I surely will. Trustee Lopez?
No items.
Trustee Romos?
I don't have any, thank you.
Trustee Dopplemore?
Yes, if we could just have a copy of the, um, the link um, for the, um, I think this is a, um, uh, thirteen point eleven. If you could, um, Dr. Curry, if you could provide, um, a link to, um, to the bill referenced in thirteen point eleven. Thank you.
No, no items. Thank you.
You don't have any? Okay. And I do not have any items to discuss either. The board just should really be proud of me, hopefully. I only had one question. And I didn't have to write it down. I, well, Dr. Curry gave it to everybody if you got a copy of it. Only had one question. I am doing much better. I'm really reading this agenda and everything. That's my discussion on everything. I'm getting much better to have what, ten, twenty to go down to one? Now, so I'm just saying I'm improving. I mean, look, it took me from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-three, but to get down to one, somebody must be doing something right. So I'll just do like this. Okay. We had a motion in the second. Roll call.
I just want to confirm I was right. Who did the second? Was that Dr. Little?
Yes.
That's a unanimous yes vote.
All right, so now we're at item fourteen. Action items. California fourteen oh one.
Yeah.
Fourteen, right?
Yes. Matt, Matt?
But I need to get a motion, right?
I can? Okay, I just want to introduce this item fourteen point zero one. So the, uh, community college, the California Community College trustee, board directors, which is through the, uh, Community College League of California, does annual elections to the board. As many of you know, trustee Calhoun serves on the, on the board directors. Uh, at the December board of trustees, uh, meeting, uh, you appointed, uh, and it was accepted for Dr. Little to review the applications and make the recommendations for the vote. We included the recommendations that Dr. Little has provided and also copies of the, um, in the election packet, the individuals resumes and, uh, statements regards to the, the position. And so, uh, the recommendations for the, yes. No, you did not.
I know it's action item. May I have a motion? Moves.
Second.
Roll call. No discussion, any discussion? That's what he was doing.
Yeah, and so, so the, uh, the board of trustees will have to, you could agree with the list from, uh, Dr. Little. You could discuss if you want to make changes to the list. And then the board would have to, uh, vote regards to this. And then I will be responsible for submitting our vote. Submitted the district's vote electronically, but it's only one vote for the district.
I will just provide the context. Thank you so much, um, Dr. Curry. I received the packet of information that was submitted um, by the candidates to the triple C T board um, in terms of this election and read through them very thoroughly as well as attended the open candidate forum as well as President Calhoun and many other trustees. And after listening and reviewing all of the information submitted, eight names for consideration which are listed on the agenda for consideration tonight's vote. If anyone has any questions about any of the candidates, be happy to discuss the process.
Does anybody have any discussion on the names that were, uh, provided?
I don't really have like discussion, but I wanted to make an amendment because I think we could submit, submit nine names and I wanted to add a, uh, uh, another name to that list.
Okay, you want another name to be considered to be added to the list. Can you please state the name and then the rationale?
Number, um, Jonathan Abud from Santa Barbara City College. I'm recommending him just because I've known him for years from attending on the conferences. He seems pretty active. He's al, he's also active on other groups like the, the California, um, state demo, Democratic Party, but I've been familiar with him. And I feel like he's a, a very brave trustee. He's pushed for things that, um, in the past, there's been a conservative majority in the Santa Barbara, um, Board of Trustees. And I think he would be a good voice to add to the, um, triple C T.
So Jonathan Abud is up for additional consideration. So I think we would want to leave it open for any other thoughts about that or decisions around that.
Uh, I have some discussion, but if anybody, uh, Trustee Lopez, you?
I, I support the recommendation. I also know Jonathan and he does good work as well.
Dopplemore?
I just want to, I just want to, I agree as well. To make sure that there is, um, um, that the candidates are, yeah, yes, I do. Because I'm not, I don't know any of them personally, so I don't have that. I only have what is, what is written on here. So I guess like my statement is to make sure that the, the candidates that we are recommending on our, um, on our slate, um, provide, making sure that, um, some of their initiatives and efforts are, um, equity and inclusion based as well. So that's my only concern. Because I don't know any of the candidates personally.
Yeah, uh, in our discussion, I looked at, uh, Mr., I looked at his application and I know that he, he was on different committees. But he was on different committees outside of the triple C T. And so he has not, I looked at people that were, uh, I looked at their applications and also attended the, uh, the interviews that they had for them. And, uh, um, I looked at, there was nothing that he did with the triple C T or the A C C T. A lot of his commitments were outside of the realm of the triple C T. I understand what you're saying about being on the state Democratic party and things like that, but I was looking at candidates and what they were doing within triple C T and A C C T. And a lot of them, I think that's why we didn't have the full amount, because we were looking at what they did, but if that, that's the choice and the board votes on it, that's fine. But that's what we was looking at uh, about their concern, because if you've been on the, uh, college board for two years, four years, six years, eight years, and we look at your application and we see that, I see, let me say me, and I see that the eight years you were there, that you weren't either on the D E I committee, none of those committees, what we had, uh, that were there with the triple C T or the A C C T. If you didn't even go to get your, uh, the trustee, what is the one you went for, we went for?
Excellent.
L T.
Excellent, interesting. Is that the one you're referring to?
Yeah, well, we got our, uh, trustee taking all those courses and stuff like that. That's what I looked at, a lot of the candidates that did go out for the trustee leadership. And I know that they do attend conferences, but at the conferences, what do you actually do? Uh, did you start doing that? So that's what I looked at. But the ladies and gentlemen said you wanted it and that's fine.
I think we can take a vote in a minute. I just wanted to weigh in as well. Um, I don't know Jonathan personally either and several of the candidates I didn't know either. And so we did try to look at, and again, there is no perfect formula. So just wanting to put forth what were some of the considerations when we think about the triple C T board and what we're hoping that this group is, is going to do. And it's not a requirement to have done any of the committees or, or any of that. But when looking at it, just looking at the whole body of, of candidates, there were some who had fewer years on the board, but they, you know, had become engaged and so wanted to see some sense of participation in that or some of the national conferences. Um, so that was just the consideration, you know, because some of it was uh, even before COVID, not as much engagement. So I just wanted to make sure that we clarified that. So we can just take a vote, because again, I personally don't know Mr. Abud.
So there's, there's, what would need to happen is that the person who made the motion and the second will have to rescind it. And then you have to do another motion, uh, regards to the slate of eight and adding the one additional person. And then there will be a roll call vote.
Okay.
First, we have to rescind the vote and then make a motion to add him to the,
Yes.
Would you two be willing to rescind the first, the motion and the second, and then we have to do it again to include his name?
Or to consider including his name into the final roster, yes.
Who made the motion?
I, I can remove my second.
Did I make the motion?
Well, I just supported his recommendation to add a, uh, the ninth name.
Which, no, the first emotion.
Oh, got it. I was, so I removed my motion because I moved it.
I rescind my second.
And so now,
Have a new motion.
I need a motion to add Jonathan.
I, I move to amend the motion to add, uh, Jonathan Abud from Santa Barbara as the, the, the ninth, um, vote.
Kennedy.
Kennedy.
And a second?
I second that motion.
So it'll be voted electronically now? The motion carries.
Fourteen oh three?
Fourteen oh two.
Fourteen, I'm sorry, oh two. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second. Do we have any discussion? Dr. Little?
No discussion.
Trustee Lopez?
No discussion.
Trustee Romos?
No discussion.
Trustee Dopplemore?
No discussion.
And I have no discussion. Please place your vote online.
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Fourteen oh three, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Are you seconding?
No, I'm saying, can I get a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Dr. Little?
None.
Trustee Lopez?
No discussion.
Trustee Romos?
No discussion.
Trustee Dopplemore?
No discussion.
And no discussion for me. Please place your vote online.
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Fourteen oh four. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second? Your second.
Second.
Any discussion? Dr. Little?
No discussion.
Trustee Lopez?
No discussion.
Trustee Romos?
No discussion.
Trustee Dopplemore?
No discussion.
And no discussion for me. May we place the vote online, please?
I'm sorry, can I get the first and second again? Who motioned? I moved, Sharonne Little. Okay.
And the second one? Romo, no, Lo.
Yes.
It was Romo. Second was Romo.
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Fourteen oh five, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
A little, second, Dr. Little. Do we have any discussion?
No discussion.
Trustee Lopez?
No discussion.
Trustee Romos?
No discussion.
Trustee Dopplemore?
No discussion.
And I have no, no discussion. Place your vote, please.
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Fourteen oh six, can I get a motion?
So moved.
A second, may I have a second?
Second.
No discussion.
All right, trustee Lopez?
No discussion.
Trustee Romo?
No discussion.
Trustee Dopplemore?
No discussion.
And I have no discussion. Place your vote.
Before, before you vote, can I make a comment? No, 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 you're not going too fast, but the question that I have, we, we, I, we recall at a previous board meeting uh, regards to, uh, trustee Lopez and what she recruits herself from. And so we didn't know regards to LA County Office of Education, is that an item you want to recuse yourself from? And so that's why we put in the action item, just to make sure that we're okay.
I don't believe so, but I was gonna say regardless.
Okay, thank you.
Is that because it's the LA County Office of Education?
Yeah, I'm not sure. It doesn't really interfere because LA go participate because it's higher ed.
Right. Okay. Election. Person doing it. The motion carries.
Fourteen oh seven. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have discussion? Dr. Little?
No discussion.
Trustee Lopez?
No discussion.
Trustee Romos?
No discussion.
Trustee Dopplemore?
No discussion.
And I have no question. No discussion. Please. Oh, it's already up there. Okay, still be up?
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Fourteen oh eight, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second, Dr. Romo. Discussion, Dr. Little?
No discussion.
Trustee Lopez?
No discussion.
Trustee Romo?
No discussion.
Trustee Dopplemore?
No discussion.
And I have no discussion. Please do your vote.
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Okay, we are out of fifteen discussion and actions. Dr. Curry will discuss the items and Okay, we are out of fifteen discussion and actions. Dr. Curry will discuss the items and request action if need. The jury is in your hands.
Thank you, Board President uh Calhoun. Just want to provide an update in your packet. You got the enrollment numbers for Compton College. We're up by fourteen point two percent from last year at this time, and enrollment continues to grow. So I just want to say thank you to everyone for their work. We're focused on fall twenty twenty-three, and we're focused on our dual enrollment efforts, but also the adult population between the ages of twenty and fifty-four. And so we're really looking at all of our strategies as they used to recruit that population of students for adults and providing certain types of workshops to support those students. And so we're really excited about where we're at now, but the pressure now is about fall enrollment. And so we're really focused on that. We're putting all of our attention for fall enrollment. And Community Day is one of our ways to uh increase enrollment for fall by open up our campus for the community. The next item is fifteen point zero two, which is our five-year fiscal management plan. Just want to just uh if you could open the document up for me, please Heather. I think this is important as it relates to uh Compton Community College District. Uh since I've been in this position since two thousand eleven, one of these that we really focus on is make sure we create a five-year budget for the district. So this helps us plan our funds for us as we move forward. Some of the changes in our five-year budget that that's different than the past, we're setting aside uh funding for capital construction projects. As you can see right now, the amount of construction we're having and the amount that construction projects are going over as late to some of their costs based off of the supply chain demand and also increased construction cost. So you can see over the next five years how much we're setting aside from district funds to support construction costs. Uh we also set aside money for zero-cost textbooks and open educational resources. As most people are aware, two thousand nineteen, the recommendation was brought forward by faculty members to move our campus to zero-cost textbooks and OER. And so we want to make sure that we're able to fund the planning that we want to do for open educational resources and also for zero-cost textbooks. So that's one of these that that's different from the past. It's included as well, but you can also look at, if you look at this document on the last page, it shows you what our uh projected reserve will be over the next five years. And it's it's critical that you look at through twenty-six, twenty-seven, which is our last year of hold harmless because the next year will start the funding floor, which our funding will still be based off the three to nine eighty FTS. So for the future, we're looking really well financially for the district, but that all can change as well because we don't know what the recession might look like and what the budget might look like in California because it's not really stable. But we're monitoring the budget very closely, but we're also planning out for the future to ensure not only our facilities processes are completed, but also some of these other initiatives that we want to have for the college are completed as well. So this is our five-year budget. We'll be taking it through our consultation process over the next couple of weeks with our planning and budget committee and also the consult the consult of council. But this is one of the recommendations from FIGMAT is that we have a five-year budget, and this is just the updated version of the five-year budget for the district. Is there any questions for the board?
I had a quick, is this for the financial or for the first one as well?
Either either one, I can.
Okay, for the FTES um in in terms of congratulations with the increase and the various activities um that that were listed in terms of um the outreach programs. Do we have a way of in any way tracking from some of these events like actual applications and then admissions? I know it's difficult. But for example, the college fairs maybe or from the counselor visits, how many referrals we get, how many actual applications we get, how many, how many do we yield? I'm just wondering.
No, that that's and that's one of these that we we talked about at cabinet two weeks ago regards to, these are all including the outreach and uh recruitment activity for twenty-three, twenty-four, which uh Nicole Jones, Vice President of Student Services is to be working with institutional effective office regards to the evaluation of the plan and those activities. And that your question will be included in that because we want to know based off the students that we have reached out to, how many students actually applied? How many students actually enrolled? How many units did they enroll in? And are they still considered students at Compton College? So your your question is right on target, and that's something that we'll be looking at as late to our evaluation.
One recommendation possibly, I'm sure you all have already thought about this, but after the student success presentation, maybe some integration of strategy there. Um whether it be just some of the kids who participated, I don't know how many of the students, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say kids, but I don't know how many of the students who, you know, participate in some of these programs like our coding, like our STEM, now this new LEAP program, I think across the board, no matter what age range or life circumstances, if we can have students, current students participate in some of these activities, I know we do in some of them, but I'm just saying a coordinated effort with the student success, that may be another way to track the data since they're going to be tracking some, you're going to be tracking some.
And we'll get back to the board trustees regards to the evaluation of our activities. So just give us a couple more weeks and we'll we'll bring something forward.
Thank you.
Uh, board members. Uh, I made on the state on my vote. I did not pay attention. And uh we need to go back, y'all online, need to go back to fourteen oh one.
So trustee Calhoun, may I provide some procedural regards to that? So you will need the majority of the board to go back to reconsider the item, and then from there you can do another, you can do what you just mentioned. No, no, that's one of the procedure. I'm good, I'll be quiet. Yeah, it's just a procedural piece because you want to go back to fourteen point zero one. If you want them to reconsider item, you would need the majority of the board to reconsider the item first and then go back and do the changes or whatever you might want to do on this one.
Does it require a motion? Dr. Curry?
Yes.
Does it require a motion to go back and revisit or just a request?
It requires a motion and a second and then a vote.
I move that we revisit item fourteen point zero one. Is there a second?
I second it. Any discussion?
No discussion.
Trustee Lopez?
No discussion.
Trustee Ramos?
No discussion.
Trustee Dopplemore?
No discussion.
I have no discussion.
This will be. I make a verbal vote. Sorry?
I didn't hear what you said.
This will be a verbal vote. Okay, it's not online. Do we need a new motion?
So you have to do the vote first verbally, then you go back in the motion to do what you want to do this item.
Okay, so may I have a verbal vote? Dr. Little?
Yes.
Trustee Lopez?
Yeah.
Trustee Ramos?
Name.
Okay. Trustee Dopplemore?
And this is just to go back and read?
I I.
To go back and make the correction, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yay.
Trust uh President Calhoun, yes.
The motion carries.
Now we have to go back and.
May you do what you want to do? You say you want to reconsider. I don't, I know what you want to do.
I wanted, my vote was wrong. I clicked on name when I should have said yes. That's what I did at fourteen oh one.
Can you go back?
Just do a revote.
So somebody need to make a motion to to do the vote in a second, and then she can open it back in.
I move that we vote on item fourteen point one that is being reconsidered.
I'll step away in a second. Do we have any discussion?
No discussion.
Dr. Little? Oh, no. Trustee Lopez?
No discussion.
Trustee Ramos?
No discussion.
Trustee Dopplemore?
No discussion.
And I have no.
And and just to be clear, because I want I want to make sure we have this right for minutes, is to reconsider this item with the nine individuals that were recommended.
Correct.
Motion is to reconsider this item with the nine members that are under consideration. So will we get another prompt? Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. The motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, board members, uh for going back. I appreciate it. Uh, item sixteen. Sixteen oh fifteen oh three.
Fifteen oh three. So this is an update on a trustee fellowship program. At the last couple of meetings ago, the board received the books. We're waiting on some information from uh Helen Benjamin regards to some activities and also reaching out to Dr. Marks to try to get this training schedule for implicit bias. So we we updated our trustee fellow to chart. Uh today in front of you, we provided the press release that went out regards to our hiring. And I have another memo to the board that'll go out by tomorrow with updated numbers of our hiring for twenty twenty-two. And so that concludes that item.
Can I ask a question, Dr. Curry?
Yes.
In in the data that we have, thank you so much for the the gender data, do we have any other uh indicators for faculty?
What other, and the kids are.
Either ethnicity. Any legal ones?
Yeah, so what we're doing in the next memo that I have going out to you has the demographic breakdown for all employee groups and new hires.
Thank you.
May I go to fourteen point fifteen point zero four? Fifteen point zero four, as the board has been talking about a lot with regards to uh leading and lagging indicators. So we have a couple more to talk about tonight, and I would like to turn it over to um Lawrence Sisenko, the Director of Institutional Effectiveness, will be provide a presentation.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Um, all right, so here I am back with leading and lagging indicators again. Um, this is a framework that we're using to really help us look at data and make it more actionable. So um we borrow these terms, leading and lagging indicators from economics and really what they are, our leading indicators um are directly related to lagging indicators. And but that's where we can really intervene. Lagging indicators are longer-term goals, longer-term indicators that are sort of like the finish line. That's where we end. And at that point, it's too late for us to do anything to make a difference on the outcome. So I like to think about it as as like a track meet. The leading indicators are all those things that are happening as the um athlete starts the race or is running the race, the the lagging indicator would be crossing the finish line. So tonight, we're going to talk about our institutional set goal um around student completion of transfer level English and math. And first, we're going to talk about it as lagging. So this is when students are crossing that finish line, they are finishing transfer level math or English. Um, as you heard my colleagues earlier, talking about our success teams and early alert, um completing transfer level math and English um is a gatekeeper for a lot of our students. Um, and so some potential leading indicators to this metric would be how students are deciding um which courses to first enroll in, whether they're deciding to enroll in English and math in their first year. Their self-confidence in these disciplines when they get into the classroom, um whether how counselors are interacting with our students to enroll in math or English. As my colleagues talked about earlier, um our program maps, and we know that we have put in our program maps that students should take math and English in their first year. Are students looking at those maps? Are they following them? Then the student experience um in the math or English classroom. So as students are coming into the classroom, do they feel a sense of belonging? Do they feel a connection to the faculty member? Um, do they feel connected to their classmates? Do they feel confident? Um, and the last um potential leading indicator that I'm going to talk about tonight um is help-seeking behavior. So are the students who are in transfer level math and English who need a little extra support, are they seeking extra help? Are they going to the student success center to access tutoring? We know from some of um when we look at student success center data that it is pretty positive, but are so are the students who need a little extra support, are they going to seek out that extra academic um support? At the bottom of this slide, um I presented the institutional set goals for these metrics. So the first row is English. From two thousand seventeen to twenty twenty-one, we've had about, we've gone from twelve percent to nineteen percent. We've had some important growth in this area with the implementation of AB seven oh five and then of AB seventeen oh five. Yet we still have a long way to go, and our goal is to more than double where we're at currently is getting to forty-eight percent. In math, um we've gone from four percent to twelve percent, again, some pretty important growth. But we still would like to increase that to at least eighteen percent of first-time students who complete transfer level math in their first year. Next slide, please. When we disaggregate these rates by gender, we don't really see um major differences between males and females. Next slide. But when we disaggregate by race, ethnicity, we do see that our black or African-American students are reaching this milestone at slightly lower rates than our Hispanic Latinx students. And these are the two major um race, ethnicity categories that there's enough data to show. Otherwise, many of the cells are um too small to present. But this is um, and we see the difference between our black or African-American student performance um in both English and math. Next slide, please. Just a, just a little twist tonight. Um, we can also think about math and English um completion as a lag, a leading indicator as well, not just lagging. Next slide. So this is what's happening before the finish line. So when we think about degree completion or transfer as our finish line, completing transfer level math or English is critically important. Um, and so I would argue that these are some of our most important institutional set goals as we go through the data and try and use it, make it actionable. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I just have a quick, is it, is it appropriate, Dr. Curry? We can ask a quick question?
Yeah, yeah, that's part of it.
Just very, very quickly, we can go back to the percentage of um one more, and then I'll come back to that. So in terms of the percentages based upon gender for for both English and then, I mean, they're pretty much even. When we go over into race and ethnicity, which is the next slide, please. We still see some stark differences based upon ethnicity. And I'm wondering what might be accounting for that? And then secondarily, how is this impacting retention and graduation rates? And when you look at the N, both for the Latino as well as the black students, you know, seventeen percent, I can't do the math that quickly, but it's about five students, a little bit under five students out of twenty-five. So what's going on with the twenty students who are not completing? Or, you know, it's it's only twenty-two or so students from Latino, twenty-five students. So you know, that's pretty drastic.
Um, and let me clarify that the number underneath is actually the count that is represented in the percentage, so it's not the N of the total population. But it is twenty-five percent is represents seventeen, twenty-five students represents the seventeen percent. That's how we presented the data in the institutional set goals. Um, I, in the future, I'll I'll include the the total N for clarity. But to your point, which is a is a good one, there there is a difference. And when we start talking about trying to use our data to identify where we're seeing equity gaps, this is what we need to be doing and 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 work to do across the campus. Um, I can't give you all the 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 reasons why um this gap exists. We hypothesized um for that there are challenges related to all the leading indicators that I was um discussing before. Um, we had several years ago, um Dr. Frank Woods and I always get their names wrong, I'm sorry, um Woods and and Harris, who came here and did a study on our black um and African-American male students, and they identified the help-seeking behavior as one of the challenges. as one of the challenges that that student group struggled with. So potentially it could be that their student, those students are not seeking the support when they need it as a potential concern and issue. I know that we've been investing heavily in professional development, looking at biases and implicit biases among our faculty or frontline staff to try to ensure that we are equity minded in all of our practices. But I think that we still have a lot of work to do here and more, more work and conversations to be had around these data.
I appreciate that. And just doing the math, this is basically 122 students. If we're just looking at the Black students who are not being served. And I didn't have time to separate, but if your total N is 382 for the Latino students, that's still about, you know, a little under 200 students. And so I'm just wondering what we can do. And I, I don't know what the numbers look like for 21, 22. And I understand it's a progressive increase. I'm just concerned about, are there implications then on the matriculation and the retention of those students who are not, regardless of the various reasons? And I know you can't fix everything, but I do think this is something very much, I appreciate that we're making it a crucial conversation.
Any other, any other trustee have a question? Trustee Lopez?
No questions.
Trustee Ramos?
No, thank you.
Trustee Dalton Moore?
Yes, again, thank you so very much. I just love when I see your presentation for the leaking and lagging indicators. I just know it's going to be just full of, you know, information, kind of like the overall, almost kind of like the measure of the success of where we are, right? So again, congratulations. I see a lot of the, you know, we're slowly inching up. So there is, I'm pretty much in all the measurements, all the categories, there's a slight uptick. So again, congratulations on, you know, continuing to chip away at that. But I would just like to make a comment really about the trustee Little's comment about the disparities, like when you look at, when you look at it racially, right? So just to address it and put it out there, it's, you know, it's a bias, right? So identifying that, you know, historically, whether you look at math or you look at, you know, science or STEM, that women or young, young adults, female adults have pretty much been shied away from, you know, those career fields, right? And also too, there is that, that, that's also that bias that our students have. Students of color and particularly African American students in the classroom, right? Whether they are, you know, you know, steered away from those particular forces of action, right? So to feel like it's something that, you know, that they can't pursue for whatever reason, right? So again, that's why we're having a lot of, you know, a lot of the support services to try to help overcome and help students, you know, overcome those biases and achieve those gaps. And also to remember that now we're still suffering or our students are still coming to us with that learning gap and that learning loss, right? From COVID. So those are just some things, I just want to put that out there just to kind of, you know, just to kind of keep in mind of like the environment that we're in. So again, progress in all areas. So, you know, kudos to that, I would say. And my comment that I had, you're like, okay, trustee Dalton Moore, is there a question in there somewhere? And I would say, I think maybe too, with, you know, what's just kind of helping some of those numbers is just, just the driving in the related careers that are requiring more of like math and science, right? And English too, as well. So of course, I, what with some of the areas of focus that Minidora mentioned earlier, with artificial intelligence, software design and gaming design, what systems or plans or focus that will be put in those areas to ensure that the students, if they are interested in those areas of study, that we're setting them up for success? So that's my question out of all of that.
And I have to take that question. So the, this is not on agenda for the night, but at the next board meeting, where I just met with the Academic Senate on Monday, the E-Board, and I met, I made with Sherry Berger to talk about the next steps regards to these new academic programs. And we have agenda items next month to talk about what's the next steps? And then we can be able to address this, but it's separate from this agenda item. But it is a follow-up item though, that we're going to have at the next meeting.
So again, sorry, I mean, scare off a non-agenda items, but that is, you know, just speaking, you know, reality here, right? So if a student wants to participate in some of those other things, in whatever area they are, to make sure that we are providing, you know, helping to overcome some of those gaps and some of those biases that our students have, because that also feeds into them transferring to their warrior institutions as well. So again, thank you.
Item sixteen grant items, none. Item seventeen, board policies, there's administrative regulations.
Nothing really to report. These are new administrative regulations that connect to the board policies that the board trustees approved earlier this evening. So you have one for gifts and donations and also one for police department. That concludes that area.
Do the trustees have any questions? Ramos, Lopez, Dr. Lewis?
No discussion.
All right, item eighteen, information items. And Dr. Curry will highlight some of them.
Just to provide an update, one eighteen point two one, we're working with the Chancellor's Office regards to our fiscal health risk analysis, which is due to the Chancellor's Office, actually during November. But I was able to receive the extensions because there's a flaw in this process as I talked to the Chancellor's Office regards to the funding floor and also regards to categorical programs. And so our report will be due to them by April 30th. So the five-year fiscal management plan will be included in that report. Also, I want to bring to your attention item eighteen point two four, which is a classified union bargaining proposal for their next contract negotiations. So at the next board meeting, there will be a public hearing as relates to that item. And then the other thing too, just to highlight, and I actually like this a lot, item eighteen point two nine, which is our follow-up log. We keep track of every request for the board of trustees and our follow-up, but we're going to change this a little bit to put a note regards to how did we do the follow-up? So either it was an agenda item, it was a board letter, or there was an email from the CEO to the board of trustees. So we're going to change this a little bit next month, just so you can show how we completed and what was the next steps. But this is something we started this year. And I want to say thank you to Sylvia for who's been working on this every board meeting to ensure that we follow up with every item for the board of trustees. And that concludes the information items.
Trustees, trustees, do you have any questions? Ramos, Lopez, Dr. Lewis?
Eighteen.
Dalton Moore?
Yes, I do. And of course, this could be addressed because I did send these questions over as well. But just an update on eighteen point oh seven, eighteen point oh eight, and eighteen ten.
Do you want to ask your question now or how do you want to do that? Because we received the questions this afternoon and we're going to respond back. But eighteen point oh eight, eighteen point oh seven was a question regards to the state and the taxes. So we're working with the, with our trustee regards to completed taxes. As I mentioned, I think probably to some board members that since it was prior year, they had to take an act from Congress. And so we're working through that process right now with our consultant, with our trustee, with our trustee for that area, for the, sorry, our trustee for the state. The other question had to do with one of the area, one of the buildings that we have that was, that had a fire and what's going to happen next? And we're working through that with our insurance company. Did I answer your questions? So next month, we should have our bond oversight, our bond, our general bond financial performance audit report. We have a report from the Associated Student Government. We have a budget workshop for the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. And just to tie in, the five-year fiscal management plan is your lead-in to the budget, which you get more information on what we're doing for next year. An update on district education and another update on campus police. There was a board letter that was included this past month. I think trustee Kahon asked for an update on police department, someone asked for an update. And we included that in our board package this month. So that's included, but we have a report on police department next month. So I have a couple that I want to share today. First of all, I'm excited. The, on, on April eighth, the student services departments will be, will be moved into the student services building. Congratulations to everyone involved. On April 10th, those departments will be unpacking their stuff and they're, they're only providing remote services, but that building will be open beginning on April 10th, 2023. It is amazing building as well. So if any board or trustee members would like to see the building before it opens, please let me know, let us cover in our eyes, but we're going to do it anyway. But we're going to do, if anybody wants to see the building before it opens, please let me know. I also want to put out there, next month, we're bringing forth a resolution regards to AB 1887 as they used to travel ban. As some of you are aware, the state of California has a travel ban to certain states based off of their policies as it relates to the LGBTQ plus community. However, we do have, we have been doing summer programs in some states. And so we're bringing forth a, a resolution for the board to consider regards to if there's a college-related visit for our students, especially in particular to HBCU colleges, that we would be allowed to use district funds. And so we'll bring that resolution forward. I just want to be able to bring that out now to the board of trustees. Because we have a lot of students who are considering going to a HBCU campus. We've been providing HBCU tours in the past. We did a summer residential program at Clark Atlanta, but right now, those students are not provided with that opportunity. And so we'll bring a resolution for it, just to address that for those students. We also be bringing a resolution next month regards to revision to the Oliver W. Connor Promise Program, which will open up to not just our three K-12 districts, but also open up to first-time students to be able to participate in the promise program. And I think the board of trustees will be happy about that. On April 19th, I am going to be in Sacramento. I have legislative meetings to go to follow up from our meetings that we had in Sacramento in January regards to our legislative ask and legislative request. And so I'll be meeting in Sacramento. I have a full slate of two days worth of meetings for that. And then finally, I wanted to announce that on the last week of April, April 24th, 28th, we will have Black Student Success Week. And that will include the Black Hour from 12 to 1 o'clock PM. And that will be online on Zoom and we will share that information with the campus community as we move forward. And a final piece that I wanted to announce, over the last couple of months, I've been working with the Achievement of Dream. As you know, we're Achieving a Dream College and also ACM Strategist regards to Black learner success, Black learner success. And so tomorrow, the report that was developed will be released. And it's basically a call to action to get more colleges and universities engaged in Black learner success. And so I'm really excited about this. I'm really excited about the announcement. I'm really excited about the call to action. But I'm also excited about the ways we can learn from other colleges and universities of how they're supporting Black learners. And so I'm excited to see how this moves forward in the future. But this is a big announcement that will be made tomorrow as it relates to that. And that concludes my report.
No questions.
No questions.
Just wanted to thank everyone for the meeting tonight and all of the great presentations. Hoping everyone is preparing for April 22nd as we get ready for our community fair. Thank you again, Dr. Curry and the administrative staff and faculty for continuing to engage our students and most importantly, for providing the necessary resources. That's it.
I have nothing to report, but I do want to remind our team members that our Form 700 is due on April 3rd, if you haven't submitted it.
No report, thank you.
Yes, I will be brief, I promise. I had the pleasure of attending, last week Saturday, attended the, the tax preparation day that was, it was actually an event by Assemblyman Mike Gibson. It was a, an amazing event. We had guests from out of town, from Atlanta, IRS Atlanta. And we also had our area tax person for the state of California for our area in attendance, as well as the Assemblyman Mike Gibson. And we had, this was like a great opportunity, as I mentioned, for future agenda items to looking at Compton College being a vitisite. This is an opportunity put on by our speaker, Assemblyman Mike Gibson, to offer not just tax preparation services to our students, but also to our faculty as well as the community. So I think this is like just a great opportunity for us to be part of. But also with that, what I did notice is coming onto the campus is having a sense of pride in coming onto the campus and just having, you know, items that are just still remaining on the, you know, on the campus. I know we've had like weather and wind and all that stuff. And I know stuff does come up and it's on the campus, but just to having those items, you know, picked up, having, you know, just having a sense of pride with litter removed from the campus in the parking lot, in the buildings and around the buildings. If we are expecting for our students to have a sense of pride and come to college, they are our biggest marketing, they are our biggest recruiter with sharing and having other students to want to come to Compton College. This is a great opportunity for, for us to do this. And I just, again, having folks from Sacramento as well as folks from out of town attend an, an event at our college as well as our representative from Sacramento. If we cannot show pride in our campus, how do we expect for our students to have pride in our campus? And most importantly, to recruit other folks to come, other students, adult learners, folks in our community to come onto our college campus? So again, what I'm saying in my mantra for this year is we are all one college. We are all one fight and every single individual has skin in the game for increased student enrollment, increased student success. So when we, and I believe we also had another event this past Friday where we had other members coming onto our campus for opening up our campus for an event. And I did not attend that event, so I can't be witness to what the conditions were. But we also have, you know, members that, that is, it's not just the individual's job to do it. It's also our students and our faculty. And as we are moving, coming from COVID and we're opening up our campus, we also need to have a sense of pride as well as that expectation from our students. So again, thank you for allowing me to speak. And that's really all I have tonight. And I just wish everyone to have a great rest of the week. And I'll see you guys next. Thank you.
All right, there was a basketball this, this past Friday at our gym. It was the Flash South Bay. Two African American females on that team, African American females. And they did lose, but they played a good game. But I try to say this as nice as I can. There was trash. Also, I don't know if anybody ever remember Coach Russell Odus. He used to play at Centennial. The winningest coach we ever had. Coach Odus was there and I was just like shocked to see him. So Coach Odus and his other young man, they have purchased a basketball team also. And so it's just a startup, both of them are startups, but they were very good young men. Great athletes. It was good, I enjoyed it, it was in the gym. There was trash. Now Universal Soul Circus is coming to Compton. Starting on March the 24th. It's going to be right behind the Crystal Park Casino. If you've never seen the Universal Soul Circus, or if you've seen it and you want to see it again, it's going to be here maybe two months, I think. Crystal Park Casino, right off the 91, where the shopping center is that, Target them. So instead of, if you come off that way where it's shut down at, you could always go through. you could always go through the shopping center and go back there where 24-hour fitness is at. It's going to be back there. Please go see the Universal Soul Circus. In fact, Dr. Curry, I gave this young man your name, your email. Dot, oh dot, that's the one, if you see this one, you'll notice him. He is the marketing person for the Universal Soul Circus. And I think he's trying to get some of our students to come. I don't know if he's giving free tickets. I don't, that ain't, I don't get into stuff like that. I immediately gave him Dr. Curry's email. Dr. Curry, you can handle that. Rainy day for the farmer's market. I know that rain or shine, we have a farmer's market. When it's pouring down rain, we have a farmer's market. What do we do to protect our students from that falling down rain when they got to stand in that long line and get their dollars? You know, are they going to go into one another room and get their dollars? And then come back and go get it? What are we preparing for rainy day pouring down on the way? Yeah, I know rain or shine is not going away. It's going to be here, but I'm thinking about our students. So some people, everybody have a right to come and speak at the podium. And I wish they would stay to the end. Because I had a community meeting. My community meeting was advertised everywhere that I could think. From, I just didn't take to the, to the school board. I took it to City Hall. I put it on Facebook. People shared it on their Facebook. I gave it to nonprofits. I did it on Twitter. I did it everywhere. And I think only a couple of people came from the public. The majority there was the staff. So I would say to these individuals that come to our meetings, come to the community meeting also, because the questions you have, those questions will be answered there also. So I'll do another one, but not till farther on down the low, down the road. Whatever the song, huh? Farther on down the road, that's a true song. But anyway, at these community meetings, we give you all the information. We don't shy away from no questions. You can ask anything that you want to ask. So let's come to the community meetings that we have. And that is it, except for, I already mentioned it about the facilities. I went to, to the restroom in the administrative building. I walked in and I walked out. And I went over to the library to use the restroom. We have to have pride. We have to have pride in our facilities. That's all I want to say. I don't want to belabor it, it's getting late. But I'm just saying, I didn't use that restroom. And I really think that restroom should be locked down, but you can't because people work in that administrative building. Unless they're going to run all the way up to the library like I did. So please have pride in our facilities. Pick up the trash. With that, our next meeting is April 18th. Closed session begins at 5:00, open session 6:00 PM. Did anybody else have anything to say? If not, this meeting is over. Real sorry.